The clock says so we will start. Welcome to the regular meeting of the House of Representatives. This is August 11th at 7:30 in the evening. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please stay standing for a brief invocation from Mr. Breakfield.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in indivi- individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Dear Lord, now be with us tonight and guide this audience and guide this council with your blessed, blessed judgment. In your worship and we pray, amen.
Vice Chair Gee Lord.
Here.
Secretary of Events here, Ed Breakfield.
Here.
Bill Marshall.
Here.
Chuck Sargent.
Here.
Justice Moore, thank you. Any announcements or correspondence from the board prior to the meeting? Hearing no response, we will look at approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion second. We approve the agenda. Any discussion? All say aye?
Aye.
All same sign? We go proceed as printed. Order of business. Item number one. Approval of July 14, 2015, meeting minutes. Some interesting reading, it's quite a volume. Remove every approved amendments as written.
I'll second that.
No one has any additions or comments?
Can't be any additions.
Well, there could, you know.
I think it's all in order. Did you do the minutes? Whoever did it, tell them good job and a lot of work done.
Okay, I'm motion the second that we approve the minutes as print. Any discussion? Hearing none, all say aye?
Aye.
All same sign? These become matter of fact. Item number two, application by Johan Drapis for special end use permits to construct at 595 Army Room, Michigan, copy of ID number 0522126013. Covered boat house, upland cut for boat well. Grant approximately 3,000 square feet of vegetation map removal of approximately 3,720 square feet and swim area of 20 by 20. So stated. This would be the third meeting that we have podded and done official business, had public hearings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I am going to ask our council to bring us up to date on where we started and where we stand and what would be the business of the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to meet again, to further deliberate the matter before us. At the last meeting, there was a consensus on the elements of the eight item numbered resolutions which all the planning commissions had. That resolution was given to the applicant as well. There was an invitation, should you wish to speak further to the findings, to do so, we'll have that opportunity extended in a moment. I apologize to those to whom my back is, but we're in a new room from our old room, so it'll be heard. I will position myself hopefully the better man that we heard. This evening, we will look at five of the other potential findings to determine if there is a consensus on those other five. In January of this year, Mr. Dress was, the applicant, was advised and writing that there needed to be a demonstration that what was proposed did not impact or be located within the natural feature setback. He had a permit from the DEQ which I believe, he believed, entitled him to do what he applied for. Mr. Dress shared at the last meeting that DEQ number seven, in fact, to paraphrase, that the DEQ wasn't subject to local regulation. I think I know what they meant, that it left an impression that perhaps he could do what was in the permit. We pointed out to the DEQ and subsequently to Mr. Dress that, per his act, Gee did obligate him to comply with the process that he intended to comply with tonight, namely, get a sw permit for the activity. The zoning compliance permit that he applied for to allow him to do these things was denied and was cited for the ordinance violations that would occur if he proceeded. The notion that the DEQ has jurisdiction or authority of the health plan cut area is false. The statement that was made to Mr. Dress was at least naive, if not ignorant and arrogant because their own permit indicates that he must comply with whatever the local regulations are. So when we received the package of material for consideration, it indeed did show an upland cut area impacted by this project, which has been cited as a violation of ordinance. So we're here to deliberate the balance of the five findings. Mr. Dress was invited, if you wish, to address any or all of those findings one more time before your further deliberations. Once that is done, the meeting will be closed to the public until public comment. We will deliberate among ourselves and see if we can arrive at further findings and then ultimately a decision on the application. If not, we'll be back next month. So, Mr. Dress, do you want to address any or all of those findings this evening?
Absolutely.
Please do.
Can I, if I agree, would you like me to stand up and address them? And also, would you like me to address them one at a time?
Excuse me, Mr. Dress. Would you stand up?
Yeah.
Would you address them by number, please? That would absolutely be easier for us, I do.
Number one states that whereas a natural protection strip is required to be maintained on subject property according to section 13.03.5. And that, when I read it, natural protection strip, it says that a natural protection strip shall be maintained within 25 feet of the normal high water mark line of the lake, which shall remain in native trees, shrubs, or grass. A natural protection strip shall not be filled or excavated except to position water pipes, trees, shrubs, that may be prone to afford view of the water. When I, as I read this, I see a couple words stick out to me, "within 25 feet." By definition, "within" does not encompass from zero to 25. It just says that I have to have a protection strip before I reach 25 feet from the high water mark. And also, I cannot find anywhere that a natural protection strip is defined in section two. So without a natural protection strip being defined, it can, I know I'm being exaggerating here, but with no definition, I don't understand how it could need to be more than a blade of grass. It doesn't define a width, a height. It just says I have to have a natural protection strip within 25 feet of the lake. So I'm not sure how I can maintain a protection strip that I don't know what it is. It does not define it in the ordinance in section two.
Is that the end of your presentation?
For, as far as for number one.
You are go. Here's key board.
Sit down.
Oh, go.
Key board. Okay. It says, "Whereas all structures shall be set back 25 feet from all natural feature areas according to section 13.03.7." And it does define a natural feature area. If you'd like me to, I can, I can read from there or I can give you my argument against that. If you, if you read section 13.03, number two, which says boat houses were permanent points may be permitted on lake lots. And I don't know if you recall last meeting, I asked about this particular ordinance and I said, "Well, if I read section 13.03, number two, boat houses were permanent points may be permitted on lake lots." You told me that if I chose to put it in the water, perhaps it would be something for discussion. So I looked in section two at lake lots, if they define a lake lot. And they do, "A lake lot is a lot abutting directly upon a lake or natural or manmade." So that tells me that a permanent point, a boat house with permanent points may be permitted on the lake lots, which would define as on by property or the property abutting the lake, which I understand is in the natural feature area. But that being said, that it says it may be permitted on a lake lots zone for single family use only after special approval is granted by the planning commission in accordance with these, with the procedures, requirements, and standards set forth in Article 30 and subject to all these minimums A through H. If I do not meet them as far as square footage, I will be happy to reduce some to come to make sure I meet all these minimums. The only one I can find in this list that I do not meet would be square footage, as Mr. Sergeant pointed out. Also, that being said, when I look at the natural feature area that it says no structure can be, can be within 25 feet of the natural feature area, that tells me number two has to be an exception to it. You cannot have, you cannot have a boat house or covered boat lift on your property with any, with it, you cannot be further than 25 feet from the, from a natural feature area, which is defined as 25 feet from the water, from the shoreline. I believe, actually, I believe it was defined as 25. It just said, it just called a natural feature area. Look at the definitions, I'm not, that was a natural protection strip.
Would you like the definition of natural feature area read?
Yes, please go ahead. I have the, I was just looking for.
Reads as follows, any of the following water bodies including but unlimited lakes, rivers, or streams defined by the high water mark. Number two, any wetland area that's defined in the ordinance. Number three, any flood lake area that's dot midway and beyond.
So that being said, number two has to be an exception to, I believe it is number five, list on, that states that no, no, sorry, not a lot, sorry. That whereas all structures shall be set back 25 feet from all natural feature areas, it would be impossible to have number two with, number two defining that you can have a boat, a boat house or permanent covered hoist with, with 13.3.7. I see it as it has to be an exception to that, definitely. Otherwise, there's, there's no, no need for that verbiage in the, in the ordinance. Number three, it says, "Whereas no clear public interest has been demonstrated to consider any setback reduction." I feel that if this was, I'm going through the proper permitting, with proper channels, going through the DEQ, having them come out with a site visit, coming in front of the planning board as I am here today, that with, if this is granted to me, that you are showing, we are saying that anyone else that meets these minimums, that lives on the lake, here's what you have to meet, here's the proper channels to go through, that where this would benefit anybody that's looking to do something similar in a similar situation. Now, it also gives the board, whoever the government body is, now they have a lake to stand on and somebody in the future does not go through these channels and build a structure that is, that is not permitted because they did not come in front of the board and get special permission, it gives you guys a lake to stand on, whoever the government body is, that it would have to be removed because you have, you will have one that is properly permitted on the lake. Number four, whereas not all possible, all possibilities for dock access to the lake with dredging have been exhausted. I, as I brought up several times before, I have put in, or tried to put in a temporary dock. It reaches 64 feet out into the lake or approximately, I believe, from, from the shoreline and I am unable to get my vote to it. As I mentioned before, it is, it's a temporary dock, a seasonal dock that is permanently stuck out there. Also, I don't, I don't remember the, the exact maximum allowable size of the dock, but I know 64 feet for a permanent dock exceeds that. So if I am asked to put in a dock that I do not have a permit from the DEQ to install, now I am also violating an ordinance that says I cannot have a dock over this certain length by certain width.
May I interrupt for a moment? As you mentioned that last month, I'm unaware of a township regulation regarding maximum length of dock.
Did I, I'm sorry, I, there is an ordinance that was read to me. I don't, I don't have the number to cite it, that there is a maximum length and width of dock allowable.
We do have a six feet by 35.
35 feet.
We do have a width limitation. What is this, what is the reference on 35?
35 feet long.
It's 35 feet long. And where is that?
I've read it many times, I can't find it.
I don't, I don't have the number to tell you where it's at.
All right, we'll, we'll find it.
Whereas reasonable access to the lake is possible, is possible as indicated in number four. I believe I just demonstrated that that is not reasonable access. And also, last meeting, Mr. Bowman stated that it was my, it's my understanding that, used to, and your understanding, that the DEQ maintained, I'm trying to make sure I use the proper words I use, maintains jurisdiction over that size wetland. Because of the size of it.
That's correct. Where, what we're asserting is that the dredging activity, because it's within a wetland of a certain size, is regulated by the DEQ. And what we're, what we're saying in effect is the original application of Mr. Dress was for dredging and a dock, right?
My original application to the DEQ.
Yes, so dredging a dock. Okay. So the dredging and the dock, the dredging and the dock for access is possible, DEQ just said it wasn't as environmentally friendly as they would look.
There, there were, yes, they said that they felt that a permanent dock along the shoreline was.
A better option.
No, the permanent boat was a better option than a permanent dock following the shoreline. They felt. The grant number six, whereas the granting of the subject special use permit would not be consistent with and promote the intent of the purpose of section 30.06.2 at section 13.01 development on the lake lots shall be regulated as to control stormwater runoff, soil erosion, water sedimentation, and prevent aquatic weed growth and promote natural feature areas. As I said before, number two's, 13.03, number two, once again, has to be an exception to the, to the rules of, or to the ordinance of 13.01. It could, if, a structure can be permitted with, with, with the planning commission's special approval, I don't see how it could not be, not promote or not be in line with the development on the lake. And also, the, the soil erosion and water sedimentation that is specified in 13.01, it also says in the natural feature area that a seawall is permitted. And on my DEQ permit, it says excavate approximately 25 cubic yards of material for upland and to create a 25 by 14 foot deep boat well, install approximately 64 foot of seawall to retain. So if you look at the natural feature area definition, the DEQ permit says I can put in a seawall. When I looked at the natural feature area that 13.06.2 is talking about, that they're trying to maintain, I'm asking for something that says is permitted in the natural feature area, which is a seawall. When I looked, there's no definition of a seawall in section two, which is the definitions, and it also does not specify the amount, the maximum or minimum amount that can be excavated to install seawall. And then number seven, whereas the granting of the subject special use permit would not be compatible with the natural environment area and natural resources since upland cut will remove the natural feature area. As I, as I said, that's something that is permitted in the natural feature area to install the seawall. It says right in the natural feature area that you can have decks, docks, piers, and a seawall. Unless anyone has any questions to read next, my side of those ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
At this point, the planning commission will now deliberate, which means only the chair can solicit comments from the public, so please be patient and wait until the public comment period. Let's begin with number one. And each receives three copies in June, July, and August of zoning ordinance section 13.03.5. Whoever has it first, please read it. Which one, section 13.03h what guy? Quote five, "A natural protection strip shall be maintained within 25, approximately 25 feet of the normal high water line of the lake, which shall remain in native trees, shrubs, or grass. The natural protection strip shall not be filled or excavated except to position water pipes, trees, and shrubs, may be pruned to afford a view of the water." End of reading. Now, the question is, do you believe that Mr. Sergeant correctly read those words? I'll ask Mr. Sergeant.
Yes, I did correctly read those words.
At least you asserted it. Did he correctly read those words?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I believe so.
He read what's printed here, yes.
Yep, I was reading along.
So finding number one is that what Mr. Sergeant read is true. So I have unanimity for that's what our ordinance says.
The question is, Mr. Mason. His point that section 13.03 two conflicts with that.
You like, let's place it, so why not?
It says boat houses are permanent points in the non-lake lots zone for single family use only after special approval is granted, only after grant special approval, but it's possible for that to happen. If we've waited for special approval.
And where it would occur is in the big circle area. That's the lot. Oh, by the way, that's part of your lot, correct?
That's, that is the lot line.
For the lot line.
You look at definition of lot, that's part of the lot, that's where the boat house can go if you approve it.
Where's the shoreline up here?
So that, that is why number two is not inconsistent and the township has inferred it, and I respect and understand how it appears to get counted. That's why you're there. Number two. Do I have a volunteer to read paragraph seven?
Can you talk to me about this one here?
Yes.
All structures shall be set back 25 feet from all natural feature areas as defined in Article Two of this ordinance. For site plan applications that require township board approval, this setback may be reduced by the township board upon recommendation by the planning commission. Individual request for reduction of the setback may only be granted as a variance from the township zoning board appeals. Both bodies in approving a reduction in the setback shall be determined that is clearly in public interest. And determining whether the setback reduction is in public interest, the benefit that would be reasonably to be expected to be approved from the proposed development shall be balanced against the reasonably foreseeable detriment to the natural features. Docks, piers, decks, board blocks, or seawalls may be located within the natural feedback feature setback.
You had the more difficult of the two. So beginning at this end, did the commissioner correctly read that portion of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes. Well, we have to, you read it, I didn't, so.
She did.
I stumbled.
Yes.
Yes. So I believe there is concurrence with number two. Now, the question, what is a natural feature? I read the definition publicly, if you recall, one of the things that's a natural feature is the high water mark of the lake. So we go back 25 feet from that and that's what establishes the, the natural feature and 25 feet from that area. So clearly, the first 25 feet is within this great regulation. That's why I heard you read. If I remember right, number three, that's Ben, we have consensus on number three. So I'll go on to number four. Have consensus on. So on to number five. Or do I stand corrected?
I show three, four, and six.
Three, four, six, that's what I think consensus for the previous meeting. So I'll move on to number five. Reasonable access to the lake is possible. Now, the applicant conceded, to use my word, that his original application to DEQ provided in his mind at least reasonable access. DEQ had a preference, but there's no indication that they would not be willing to consider a dredging dock option, just not the one. On that basis, I don't believe all options are exhausted. Now, the elephant in the room was brought out by Mr. Sergeant last month and he, he asked the applicant, "Are you aware of the draft of your boat?" And at that time, the applicant was not certain of the draft of the boat because the boat piloted by Mr. Sergeant adequately maneuvered to 30 inches of water. The elephant in the room is, we might have a boat that's too big, if you will, for the shore area that you're accessing. You mentioned some damage to the boat mast.
Yep.
With a shower draft boat, would there be reasonable access to the lake with less dredging?
One question. Mr. Sergeant, his boat grew 18 inches.
With a pontoon boat, yes.
18 inches. And he saw the water is 30 inches deep.
What was your testimony from last month regarding the depth of the water?
Yes, the draft of my boat is 18 inches.
And the depth of the water?
And the depth of the water, as measured by me, was 32 to 43 inches.
At what point?
Within five feet of the 64 extension length of his dock.
So at 69 feet out, you've got 30 odd inches.
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need to take the quarters?
No, nope, nope. As tempting as that is, you'll be given one more opportunity. You give him one more opportunity at the end before they decide. Mr. Breakfield.
It was a question, I can wait till the end.
It's a very simple question, please back to me. Mr. Dress, you know how deep your boat is, what's the draft of your boat?
With no weight in it, it's approximately 20.
With no weight in it, it's approximately twenty-four to twenty-seven inches, but I will point out that it is a prop on like a outboard, inward outboard is not adjustable, it is the furthest down element in the water.
And what is that draft?
Twenty-four to twenty-seven inches with no weight.
What about weight, would you know?
The more you put in, the deeper it goes, probably up to thirty, thirty-three inches.
Thirty-three is the max, right?
I would say that's fair, yes.
So, so with some dredging, you could get closer than sixty-nine feet. And with the dredging you originally proposed, you could get right up to your shoreline dock?
Definitely. With the dredging I propose, I would know the bottom of the dock.
Okay, so what we're saying is, with dredging and some kind of dock configuration, there are alternatives to what is before you. So we move on to what number, copy up here?
Six.
Six, which previously conceded with consensus. Number seven. Would the upland cut be compatible with the natural environment and conserve natural resources? By removing the natural resource, would that conserve the natural resource? What say you, Mr. Sargent?
No.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
I believe you have consensus on number seven. Now, we have an obligation to do several things, which I think you have done. You must base your decision on some standards, which you've done, namely the ZO ordinance. You must come up with some findings of fact, so the applicant knows why in the world you've decided what you decided. And these eight findings of fact are your findings at this point, subject to a final comment by applicant. These findings result in a conclusion. The conclusion has been suggested in number. Yes, thank you.
Sid can hear you down here.
I apologize for not being more sensitive to that. We're accustomed to a better room with microphones, so we're all in this together. So, because you have findings, because you have a conclusion, there is now an opportunity for someone to report a motion to deny the application based upon the findings that are based upon the standards of the ordinance. Once the motion to deny has been put, unless someone has findings contrary to these, which would support a different finding, then we'll have an opportunity to discuss it, before deciding, the applicant will be given another opportunity to respond to you. But we need to know at this point where your deliberations are, so we need a motion that is supported by the findings. Who would like to report that finding, that motion?
Also.
A motion, Mr. Chairman, their support.
I second it.
Okay. Now, at long last, we can talk about whether or not that motion reflects the resulting deliberations. Now that Mr. Dress knows what your thinking is, one final opportunity to adjust the planning commission before they put that motion to a vote.
Well, I, I don't know what else you might be looking for besides you saw my, my view of the, of the ordinances, of how I interpret them, how, how I read them to the letter as far as the, and backed them by the definitions in section two, and also the word reasonable access was used. I think when you say reasonable access, I don't, I don't think selling a boat, buying a new boat, asking, looking to swap upwards of hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to gain access, I don't find that to be reasonable. If anyone had any questions for me besides that.
I want to thank you for representing your case well and taking the time to do the research you did. I want to reflect that it was my attitude, not that of any finding commissioner, that part of the problem is the draft of the boat is a little more than perhaps suited. The good news is, you're free to get DEQ'd as long as you dredge, so you got it. That's the good news. Because we're only dealing with the boat, boat house or points, and the dock question was pretty much taken off the table by yourself in response to the DEQ invitation. So the good news is, you should still be able to dredge, and you should be able to get them through, prove some kind of dock.
Well, it's my understanding as well that a seasonal dock is not required.
I'm not addressing that. I'm not addressing that, it's just that was before. So you heard from the applicant, you have a set of findings, you have a conclusion, you have a motion. It's now appropriate for you to discuss among yourselves the motion that's on the floor. I'll defer back to the chairman for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, and thank you also for your presentation. Include our verbal findings, the town, the board will now talk amongst themselves if they feel it's appropriate. We do have a motion on the floor, obviously, and a second, and the proper thing to do after that is discuss it. So I would ask someone on the board, if they would like to discuss it, to come forward. And if not, I will probably approach you individually, ask you if you have some points of discussion.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question for Mr. Bowman.
Please do, break.
Point of order on this resolution. Mr. Bowman, is it all or nothing? If we, we can't accept some and deny some, it's either, I'm asking.
Well, your, your findings are now unanimous, the, the, it's done. Add up one through eight, and what is the conclusion? It's one of those three options, I believe, there's only one conclusion that can be drawn from those, but it is the maker of the motion's obligation to choose, and I understood the maker of the motion to believe that the preponderance of the findings, if not all, argue against an upland cut in the natural feature area. Is that an adequate response?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to right off the bat eliminate, approve with conditions, because I can't imagine adding conditions to this, so I'd like it to either be approved or denied.
You're asking, change the motion?
No.
No?
No.
You have, you have to comment on the motion, right, Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent, you care to comment?
No, I think that the findings confirm the motion.
Phil, do you care to comment?
No.
Well, I, I don't.
Oh, I don't, I, I hear it.
Go ahead, Phil.
Sorry about that.
But the record show that Carol answered for Phil.
By proxy, can I, can I ask the applicant a question here?
If the chairman will allow.
Sir? Okay. Your cut for, to put your boat house in, in the safety zone, we'll call it, the same boat that you have now with the draft that you're saying is to be, since the bylaws of Addison Township say you cannot approach upon that twenty-five feet safety zone, you're still going to dredge to get your boat in to a dock?
That's my understanding of that.
Okay, do you plan on putting it in a seawall or just a dock?
I, it's, it's, that's, I suppose that's up to you guys right now. My, my suggestion, a seawall with the covered boat house. My, my plan after dredging, I, I don't know. Depends on, on the decision.
Okay, you're going to have to dredge the lake, part of the lake, to get your boat in to dredge out part of the safety zone for the boat dock, or boat house.
That would be correct.
Okay, so, and since, like I said before, the safety zone is untouchable, that your dock or seawall, with the dredging, that would give you the access to the lake that you need.
Yes, it would give you the access, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, awesome.
Ed? Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Dress for being very meticulous. I'd like to especially thank Mr. Bowman for walking us through line by line, and that's the only comment I have.
The chair stands by the findings. Do you care to comment again, Ben?
No.
Thank you very much. Joe?
No comment.
Gene? Motion stands. I have a motion in front of me to deny the applicant his request, supported by, by a colleague right here.
The, the motion is to adopt the resolution to deny the request.
Okay. And we've had a discussion, any more?
Since it is a resolution, we typically request a roll call vote unless it is unanimous.
No, I want to make sure everybody understands how we're voting. The applicant has come to us with a request to do so. The motion is to.
Adopt the resolution to deny.
To deny. So if we are not going to grant him his wishes, do we vote yes or no?
You vote yes to adopt the resolution. Yes means no.
So in essence, that's what I'm getting at. In essence, your vote of yes means we do not grant the applicant his wish.
Yes, so yes, I support the motion, or no, I don't support the resolution.
That being said, are there any more questions? Is there any more discussion? Then I'll take a roll call vote.
Chair Lawrence Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gene Lohr?
Yes.
Secretary Benz?
Yes.
Ed Breakfield?
Yes.
Phil Marshall?
Yes.
Chuck Sargent?
Yes.
Jeff Schneer?
Yes.
Voting carried with the yes votes. I still would like to thank everybody for their cooperation, for their patience, because it's not been a planned, drunk affair. I realize that some are going to come out of here unhappy, and some are going to come out of here happy. I hope that we have done this in a very gentlemanly fashion, and that you were to be commended for both ways, and you were to be commended also. That being said, would that end the item, something you're giving?
Yes, it does, it's true.
The next item is a public forum. A public, yeah, forum, yes. Public forum. Anyone in the audience that care to voice something for the good of the order, I will recognize your hand and. Sir?
Gene Crumbes, somebody's listening. During these discussions the last three months, one of the things that concerned me that hasn't been discussed, and I think it's, there's a lack of information, is the constant rumor I hear about arsenic in the lake. So if we do dredging, how do we find out what it does to the lake or potentially could do the lake? Does it affect the wells, would kill off the fish in the lake? Is there any way, you know, or am I just, you know, me and some others being paranoid? How do we find out scientifically what potential effects?
So your question basically is, if it disturbed the dirt, does it disturb the Arctic, so we'll move around or do something together? Right, and, and the first question is, is the rumor true that arsenic is an issue, how much an issue? Because I have, other than rumor, no facts whatsoever. I don't have it with me, Ellen DeLatere had some facts, I don't know who they were made up by, but Ellen DeLatere did have. I'm not looking for an answer today, I want to put it out, we could look for correspondence. Sir?
I offered up at the last, at the first meeting, to send anybody that wanted a copy of the document that was furnished to the MDEQ prior to this, them concluding their part of this process, showing that on their own websites or their own data, there's arsenic in Lake Billings. If anybody wanted a copy, okay, I'd be happy to furnish it to them. It's my interpretation, it's MDEQ's interpretation, DMGNR's interpretation on their own data.
The data that you received and looked at, is it something from one to ten, a concern? In your opinion?
I was concerned enough that I brought it to MDEQ's attention and asked them, okay, for their professional opinion, okay, why they were questioning.
Without reading the work, would I come back after I read from a one to ten opinion? Is that diverse, is that direct, and that complete?
To be very candid with you, it's not my area of expertise, but you have two issues. You have arsenic in water, and then the question becomes, how much that arsenic will leach into the sediment? And the only studies that are out there basically say that if you have iron, manganese, or aluminum in your sediment, then you're going to accumulate the arsenic in your sediment. Well, guess what? We've got a very mineral-rich water and sediment out there. I believe it's loaded with iron and manganese. So you can draw your own conclusion to that. There is no actual data that I know of on our lake defining that relationship, it's just known in science.
So question number one, you heard the answer, number two, people give you the information that needed? If you ask me for it. You got to ask me. Well, the, the second part of the question is, how do we go about finding out the effect on the lake? Well, I mean, you know, I agree with you, but we need to report first to see what we found.
I don't want any defish out of the lake and die.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I have access to that data.
Okay.
A copy of which I can provide to Mr. Crumbes. The, the reference material is the Oakland County arsenic samples DEQ Water Chem Database, nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and three collection period of samples. The map of the database samples, and the results of those samples identify concentration greater than twenty, greater than fifty parts per billion at the shoreline at five nine five Army Road. There's a sample database. This is an enlargement of the lake. This symbol indicates concentration verified greater than twenty and in excess of fifty parts per billion. So that data is available.
Okay, thank you. Further comment on the public forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next commissioner of their part. Anyone on this commission have a report for us? Who doesn't?
He started to raise his hand.
No. Okay. I'm going to ask Joe to refer on his resignation.
Well, I'm twenty-two years old.
How old? I didn't hear you.
And there are a lot of things I have stacked up to do, and when you look when you're eighty-two years old, you wonder how long you're going to be around. So we have really competent people on the commission, or whatever, that are great, we have great, I'm going crazy. We have really good people who are on the park, park rangers, they're all workers. All I ever did in the meeting was make sure they didn't beat one another up. All I ever did in the meeting was make sure they didn't beat one another up. Okay, and I really enjoyed working with them, but I'm running out of time, I'm running out of lifetime. So I decided to do this.
Thank you, Joe. I'm sorry that I agree with you. I feel the same some days, but, but, but. Anybody else on the court want to have such a thing? Um, my Commissioner reported that, uh, I am the liaison on the CBA. We have not had much, uh, actually lately, I believe we have some coming up Thursday night, and I understand we have a few more new applications that have not been processed. The CBA will have some things to do in the next couple of months. And Ed, you may comment?
As you know, the building is being remodeled right now. Everything's progressing fine, uh, using very good quality material, and you're going to be very pleased with what you see in the outcome. And, um, I wish I could invite you to go in there, but it's, you can't. But just trust us, it's going to be a beautiful building when it's done.
Yeah, please do.
I attended a workshop over at Kensington Park ran by the Department of DEQ and Organization of Inland Lakes, preserving them. Very, very informative, what lakes are trying to do, like older settled lakes like Betterfield, trying to get the natural strip back. On where you go down to the lake where you're on, they're re-landscaping to allow this, uh, Hemp Lake was an example they gave, and, uh, Orchard Lake was a plenty of, it was very, there's all kinds of workshops out there, it was a, oops, I opened, what is available to lake communities to get more information. I found it very beneficial.
Thank you.
Sir? Yeah, I just wondered, what is the construction going to be completed? Do you know offhand? Their target is early next year. Probably, do you follow up early next year, or is that the target date?
I think the goal is November, so I'm hoping for December.
Yeah.
Probably Easter.
Do you have a question? No, right here.
We got one more answer.
Just one quick feedback, Mr. Breakfield. The general contractor vendor you guys selected has an excellent reputation in the community. So is my commendation.
And just one thing more that Wines brought in, the general contractor, he developed, but the lady that's running it is a local resident, so, um, she is, I mean, we're keeping it home, we're keeping our daughters in Addison Township for the most part. Uh, the roof was donated, if you guys didn't know that. The, it was a huge donation, almost a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the reason they donated the roof was so we could modernize the senior center, so we needed the money to do that. So we took the money that was designated for the roof, and we've added the senior center, we've put a deck on it with the top, we've added a beautiful fireplace, we've added a lot of things, all for the seniors, so...
We'll be there for twenty minutes.
We're rushing, we have to make it for itself, so...
Just for you, Joe.
Yeah, but so, uh, I, again, I say, the building is going to be a really a nice building, and very, very useful. The way it's laid out is going to be very welcoming to everybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Uh, I would like to express a sincere and heartfelt thank you to Joe for your contribution to the community's, uh, the spacey Addison Township. And in today's world, aging too is the new middle age.
Okay, I have one comment on that.
You disagree?
We deliver meals on wheels, so I can wheel and have a meal on me, and the spell, this is holy. And I says, uh, I was seventy-six at the time, he should be here, he's not delivering.
I make a potion wheel, sir.
I'll second it. Most of the second in discussion, hearing none, I'll turn to the eye. All the same sign. Want to get next up?